Yeah, and Tom's not a North Davis graduate.
Okay, everybody, we're live. We will start the meeting here on Davis County Council on May the 10th. First, we will stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is kings, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looks like a rather short agenda first on approval of meeting minutes from April the 12th. Anyone's had time to look at them. Any corrections, additions, amendments? If not, who moved? Motion by Matt to approve second.
Second.
Second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All same sign. Twenty twenty-three Wage Committee. We started a wage committee for next year's budget, which is this year's president, last year's president, and next year's president. Tom is the chairman of that group, so we will let Tom explain a few things here.
You all should have a copy in your meeting documents there. We looked at a couple of different things. We looked at the local economic, everybody got it? Okay, we looked at the local economic factors there. And you could see the receipts have steadily increased and the county general fund actually was down just a little bit from the two previous years, county general receipts. We're in good position there, Davis County is. We've got good cash reserves. However, we do have some earmarked funds for community projects coming up. They total one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And of course, we got the pending remodel of the courthouse coming up. Our maximum levy has been projected increase for the twenty-four budget by estimated at four percent. And that's good, it's an increase. However, it's less than the five percent that we had last year. Couple of things you can look at there is the payroll comparison history. And one thing that Jen mentioned there, the reason twenty-two is higher is because there was an additional pay number there. We looked at some federal economic factors. You guys could see them on there. We had looked at the consumer price index, some other areas. Basically, you could see they've all gone up. Based on our salaries there of this year's full-time salaries of nine million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, you could see what the percent impact would be for the different pay increases that we have. I'm looking at all those factors. The committee recommends that we do a three and a half percent wage increase for full-time employees and also for part-time on seasonal employees. One thing that we did decide to do this year that's going to be a little bit different is we're going to review with the county department heads. And that's going to be on Monday, May twenty-second and Tuesday, May twenty-third. That's going to allow the committee to receive direct input from the department managers concerned as staffing and compensation. That's our plan for right now, and that is our recommendation.
Tom, what percent of the overall budget is salaries? Hey, do you know roughly?
No, it's almost fifty percent of the general fund for sure. Our full-time salaries are going to be nine million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, so... I don't have that exact number, Mike.
Okay, that's fine.
You can see where our county receipts are there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Here again, once we meet with each department head, there may be some additional steps we need to take, so... Questions, comments?
Pretty thorough job.
Thank you, Mike.
I think too that we've tried to be conservative in the past, and we know that the employment is is harder and harder and harder, going to be harder to retain. So I think you guys have done a great job, and I would echo the thoughts that I believe your recommendation is appropriate.
I would echo what Mike says. We want to stay competitive. I don't know, we can always pay what the private sector can, but we need to try and pay what we can and keep people, we've just lost a keeper not long ago, so... Yeah, I think it's good work.
Of the total county receipts, it's ten and a half, ten and a half percent.
Ten and a half, yeah. I would make the motion to approve the recommendation that's been presented.
Let's hold off on that until we meet with the department heads.
Okay, okay, all right then.
Then after that, we'll, three of us will come back with the final.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, Visitors Bureau Commission update. Your words, Trooper.
Kind of activity on this over the last few months and even going to the last year. What you do have in front of you is a draft of an ordinance. Sent this ahead of time via email. Happy to answer any questions and then just provide a bit of context. I know Darren has been actively involved with it. I know Marilyn has been actively involved with it. Several of you have offered comments. I might speak to the location of the funds and just, you know, you all have a conversation about how you want to do that. Honestly, the most important piece of this, in my opinion, is the location of the funds. The fact that the money is now being held by the auditor is extremely important. And going forward, we shouldn't have some of the confusion that we've had in the past relative to that type of thing. So I think that's a critical piece of this. As to whether or not you want to break out funds and separate something out for some specific purpose, that's of some importance, but it's ultimately your call if that's what you want to do. My request and what I mentioned to Jen was just that if that is your preference, we clarify that if that's what you want to do, either in the minutes or some, somewhere, something in a resolution some time ago that said what it said, and that I think further created confusion and further created some unknowns. The wishes of the council are critical as it relates to money. I mean, you're the fiscal body, and so I would give you plaudits for helping get this across the finish line. I'm comfortable with the draft ordinance as it rests. The commissioners talked about it a little bit yesterday, similar agenda item, just an update. But I do think it probably makes sense, if the council is comfortable with this or if they've got changes, for them to go first as it relates to their wishes. That's just my, my thought. Wouldn't have to be the case. In the Indiana Code provision that speaks to this specifically, it lays out what the fiscal body is responsible for. And there's quite a bit of responsibility there on the fiscal body. This issue started with the fiscal body, and so I just think that your wishes should be, should be paramount.
Basically, we just need to decide if the one and a half percent needs to be held in something, in a separate account, so you can see its growth from period to period.
Yes, I also want to get your feedback if you're comfortable now with this ordinance. There is a place for both the council and the commissioners to sign and approve. Essentially, it would be cleaning up the old ordinances, saying this is where we differ from the uniform innkeeper's tax statute within the Indiana Code. This is how we're, you know, there's a single line in the Indiana Code that says Davis County may charge nine percent, something like that. Okay, in the past, and even in our ordinance, it says the old amount, right? So there are some housekeeping things that need to be cleaned up, but this is also kind of a response to some of the confusion that we've had over the last six months and sets us back center. And so this is, if, if, pretty simple, to be honest. It's, it's simple. It clarifies some of the confusion. It says that the body is a department of the county. It says that the money will be housed by the auditor. Says just a handful of things that are, in essence, a response to some of the confusion again. So I'd like your, I'd like your deliberation on that. And sure, if you're wanting to do something relative to one and a half percent, that should be discussed and perhaps voted upon to give the auditor direction.
Yeah, I think this is clarification, and then we can segment from there as we, as we need, need necessary.
One thing I'd ask Jen, I would ask you, as the auditor, because you're the one that's going to be responsible for keeping track of the funds, what would be easier for you? Would you prefer to see that one and a half percent separated out? Does it make a difference to you?
There's some communication. I would, if we want to separate some funds out, then we will do it as an investment. Then that money would be put in an investment policy that is already structured by state board. We can then invest it like we do our reassessment funds and our recorders' funds, and then that way it's still housed within our system, and we can see the balance grow every year. And it's kind of separated in its own thing, but it's still one big pot of money. And you can clearly see the lines, because if I just put all that money within that fund at the end of every year, those appropriations fall off, all the money then is intermingled back in, so there's no way to keep it separate within that fund. So if we're wanting to keep it separated, I think the investment piece would be the way to go, to make a clear line, and it can also grow to get to the goal of what you're wanting to achieve. So, and I have talked to Jamie Chapman, the treasurer, and she said she can send out bids and get that process started. Because when the funds did come in-house, back into the county, they did provide two checks because they did have funds set aside for that. So we do know what their amount was coming in, and then once a year, whenever that matures and we need to reinvest, we can look at our receipts, pull that one and a half percent off the top, and then put it into that investment and move forward.
That's clean with the state board of accounts, so that, I mean, for me, that makes a lot of sense.
Two issues first, one is the ordinance and one is the one and a half percent.
Right.
Check one on, we started with the ordinance. Anybody have any questions, problems or issues?
I'm good with this as presented.
So we need a motion to approve that, because we're...
Did you have something, Darren?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Darren.
So on, on the ordinance, I don't know if you've got it pulled up.
Yeah.
On section one, we have a ceiling for the contract amount. And I don't know, I don't know if that's something we really want to put in the ordinance. Oh, wait a minute, maybe I'm not looking at the...
You're looking at the...
Yeah, you're looking at the...
Oh, I am, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah.
Never mind. But let me, let me, let me find that one, though, because I think, here, let me look at this.
Is still, I think, being discussed between the two bodies.
Right.
And that's, that's appropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Right? I mean, something that they hopefully can, can sort out.
The rates is still on there, Darren, on, on under C, yes, that's on mine.
Nine percent?
Yeah.
I might read through it and just see if there are things that you all would change or if you're comfortable.
Yeah, no, the rate's fine, I mean...
He's talking about the contract.
Yeah, I was talking about the contract.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
No, the nine percent's set by the state, actually, so...
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Contract's not a done deal yet. Yeah, right, they're still negotiating.
Yeah, I had pulled up the wrong one.
It, it's intended to just clarify, because we did have some issues with the ordinance is, it's also to respond to some of the problems.
Yeah, I, I just, one of the things I do want to point out on, on the, on the ordinance too, is the fact that it states that no foundation shall be established.
No foundation or separate bank accounts.
Or, exactly. And so that was, that was an issue that needed to be resolved, and so by having that put in the ordinance, I think that clarifies that.
Get some pushback on that.
Well...
It cleans it up a lot.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's...
If we're looking, if we're looking for a motion based on this, we'll make that motion.
Motion by Matt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprinkle, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now, we'll address the one and a half percent to keep that in a separate investment, separate bucket, so we can see that grow.
And real, real quick, this allows for that, points to council may establish additional sub-funds. The auditor, the commission, or another party may make a request for appropriation of funds.
Yeah, this isn't something we need to make a motion, we just need to decide if we want the auditor's office to keep that number separate.
Yes, you, it's, it's your decision, and I would, if you do want to do something separate, I would request a motion, just so that, so that adds clean.
I see no harm in having it separate.
Tom, and you're going to be able to see that when anybody requests that amount?
Yeah.
And if, you know, they get to a point where we need it, we can always encumber the funds and use them for that purpose, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
There's always the risk of having it spent also if you don't put it away.
Right.
I would make that motion that we have a separate account for the one and a half percent.
An investment account?
Yeah.
I'd second that.
From Mike and Mike.
From Mike, second by Mike. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sprinkle was first, Myers is second.
I think that's a great idea.
You too. That way we can keep the track of one.
And if it's in, you know, there's a growth account, you're still making a little more...
Any other words of wisdom, counselor?
Um, there's a couple more things that will be finished out on this, but this, this keeps it going, and I really appreciate your attention and effort and feedback. Do you want me to talk about the Westgate incentives? Or do you want me to sit back down?
Go ahead.
Okay. This week, there was a discussion relative to the economic development agreements and trying to finish those out. I would direct you to your minutes where at last meeting, you said you were approving the abatements contingent on the economic development agreements, which was smart. That makes sense. It puts the pressure on them to get it done and to understand that this is give and take with the county, they've been good to work with. We had requested that they take on the cost of accomplishing some of these incentives, and they've agreed to that. So the language that they will put into the document and send back over to us, which should be final then, will say that up to a cap amount, they are going to pay for that cost, and it will happen the first year that they receive the benefit of these incentives. So I presumed that that was acceptable to you all, but I just wanted to give you that update. That should be the last piece related to, so the abatement, the EDAs. Two weeks from yesterday, there will be a further discussion about the option south of 558, up at Westgate, and that should also be completed at that point. That's all. I don't know if there are any questions or if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So remind yourself, we await more news later.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Grant.
Thanks, Grant.
Additional appropriations, I believe Lauren is up first.
Morning.
Good morning.
So as you all know, I was here last month with the contract that was signed by the commissioners for pronos writing to take care of all the files that we have already scanned in, and I wasn't sure how I was going to pay for that, so it was suggested that I pay out of perpetuation fund. I have emailed the state board of accounts and gotten a response back that yes, it's okay to do that. So I'm just asking for an appropriation to be set aside for that. I don't know how much it's going to be yet. I have five of the great big, like trash cans with the flap-up lids in one of our offices, and we've filled those four times so far, and they've taken them away. It's by pound, I haven't gotten a bill yet, so I don't know what to expect, but I just asked for a flat twenty thousand so that it's ready as I need it. If I don't need it, Jen said it will stay in that account, and if I need more, of course, I'll let you know, but that was just to get it started.
We've, we've talked about this a couple of times.
I move to approve.
Second. Moved by Tom, second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you. Do you want me to go ahead and talk about my transfer to, okay?
Since you're up there.
Okay. As you know, it was a small election this time. We only had the one city council district, so I shortened the early voting hours, I shortened the Saturday voting hours. There were only three people in the election office all day, and we usually have seven, so we didn't use very much on meals like we normally would with all the poll workers, et cetera. So there was extra money in that account, and since we're scanning all of the court files, another one of our scanners has gone bad. So they swapped them, so that my election girl took the one that wasn't the best, just because she doesn't scan as much, but it's definitely on this last leg. So I was hoping I could transfer some of that money to go ahead and get her a new scanner.
Which is number five on our sheet. Questions for Lauren?
I'll make a motion to approve the new scanner.
Motion by Matt to approve those funds.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darren.
Darren. Next up is the Riverboat YMCA. We've discussed it and...
Make a motion to approve the funds for them.
Okay. Motion by Matt to approve. Second by Tom, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, oppose, same sign. House report, moving advertising, volunteer retention.
Got one here, looks like she's got donations and she's just appropriating funds. This is approved.
Moved by Mike Sprinkle. Second by Marilyn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign on both of those. Number five, we already did with Lauren, Superior Court, transfer of office supplies and transcripts, deposition's a thousand dollars. Questions? Not?
I move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Tom to approve.
Second.
Second by Mike Myers, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We also have in our packet information, fund balances, Davis, Martin County Joint Park Recreation Minutes, and finances from Community DCH. Any questions from the audience, comments? All right, Gary?
Over the weekend, one of my deputies went in the ditch, every airbag deployed, so we're probably assuming that that vehicle's now totaled. Haven't gotten back from insurance on it yet. But Washington Chrysler bought three Dodge Durango's lease packages for Dubois County, and Dubois County backed out and got Tahos on the last minute on that. They had three of them sitting down there, and I was thinking I could maybe put in an additional appropriation for next month and maybe buy those three, but Pike County's already bought one, so there's only two. The two that we're looking to replace are the dog trucks, and the cages in there won't change into Ford style or into the Dodge style. The cage systems are about thirteen thousand for both of them, and I'm just kind of, should I just ask for an additional appropriation in June and tell him to hold on to them? And then not have as much in my 2024 budget? Because I wouldn't have to buy them on 2024 budget. I'm just asking what you all would like to see me try to do there.
If you were to order that vehicle, like, how long would it take you to get it?
I've got one that's sitting up there now to be delivered that was ordered in September, and I have one that is not even on the line yet.
Better off to speak for those two, you can get it right now.
Okay, but I'd have to ask for an additional appropriation at the next meeting.
That'd be my thought.
And I told Glenn that I was going to run this past y'all to see what y'all think, but...
And then those two would not be in the request for next year's budget?
Right.
And they were going to be in the request for next year's budget?
And the thirteen thousand for cages. But they're sitting there, and I'm, I'm a car down, so...
Now, when we find out on the insurance, is that money then just go back to...
It goes into county general, then I come back, ask for it out of there. So that would be part of it, and then I'm not sure exactly what I want to trade, so that'll knock down some of the, but before I go to all that length, I want to make sure it makes sense to you folks to ask that.
Yeah, I would just tell Glenn, you know, we're interested, and once we get final numbers and for the next meeting, we're good to go.
Okay, all right.
That's what I think, too.
Yeah.
That's, that's what makes sense to me, since they're sitting there. The, the only difference in them is they are V eights and all of our others are V sixes. So, uh... The V eight, the, the dog vehicles do sit and run idle when the dogs are in them, because it keeps the air conditioning and the heat going for the animal, so the bigger engine might be a better deal. Other than that...
And the prices are going to go up next year?
Yeah, I, I called to ask, and right now they said nothing, nothing has changed yet, but it'll change in September.
It will, for sure.
Deputy's fine?
Yeah, yeah, he's not hurt. He was going to back up another officer, and the road had a ninety-degree turn in it, and he realized it, hit a pole. I think he'd have been all right had he not hit the pole, but when he hit the pole, that activated the airbags. Airbags, it's a sixteen as well, so it's a seven, seven, eight-year-old vehicle. Sure they'll total it.
Yeah, so what we're telling him is the recommendation is to go ahead, and then you'll have exact numbers between trade-ins and insurance, and then we'll do that appropriation.
For the next meeting, but, yeah. I mean, it takes six weeks for, for county to do business, I'm like, I gotta get ahead of this.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Any other questions from the group? Questions from your ladies? If not...
I just, I had something here. I looked up, periodically I'll look up on the DLGF website, that shows the county tax rates for all ninety-two counties. Fifteen, twenty years ago, Davis County was top ten in county tax rates. We are now in the lower, there's only twenty-five counties that have a lower tax rate than we do, they, most of them have raised, so we are now in the bottom third of county tax rates, and I think that's a testament to the people in this county that work. We've generated edit monies that we've been able to use in projects, and we haven't had to raise tax rates and stuff, so I thought that was kind of a, a credit to all the people in the county and the way, way they work, and thank goodness we're not in that top bunch anymore.
And still retaining good balances.
And still retaining good balances. I, I feel like the department heads and everybody in the county's done a good job to try to keep us in good shape and keep our balances up, so I thought that was an interesting piece that I pulled up about four or five weeks ago.
Well, that's awesome, and, and one thing I always say is education to the public is very important, so thanks for bringing that up, because most people always hear taxes up, up, up.
Yeah.
And they don't realize that the county's in that bottom, you know, percentile, so...
And there's sixty counties with higher county taxes than us, we're tied with six other counties, and there's only twenty-five that are lower now, so...
Thing I tell people, too, is a lot of times when a county or a city builds a building like the one we're sitting in, they have to raise taxes or something to do it. We actually eliminated the jail tax early, the year before we started this building. So we cut taxes and still built this building. Not a lot of counties could have done that. I think even at the time, Jason Simler told us that. Not a lot of counties in the state would have been in a position to do something like that. And like I say, it's a credit to people that live here and work here, credit to our people that work for the county, the job they do managing their funds.
And to expand on Mike's conversation, Jason Simler, we, we asked him about lowering the county tax rate, and he said, "I'm going to have to check into that," because nobody's, nobody's lowering taxes now. And he got back with us then, so just a pretty nice piece that complements our county, I think.
Couldn't think of a, a better point to end the meeting.
That was great.
Fiscal responsibility. Fiscal responsibility.
Move to adjourn.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, first by Mr. Sprinkle, second by Matt, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I don't think anybody else opposed. Thank you, ladies. Everybody gets out.